Is it just discussion or do you have a?
No, I have a sheet.
Okay. We just want you to know exactly what is being left on the table in terms of savings if we don't want to. And when we talked about, we try to be conservative and talk about savings that we are 100% certain will happen, because if we fully regionalize, we couldn't just eliminate all of certain positions and be partials. So the numbers we have on here, right, Dr. Barnes, are the ones that we know we would save.
Right.
So you can see that transportation is one area. So if we were funded fully and we were regionalized, Foster was regionalized K to 12, we would save $348,108 per year, right, Dr. Barnes?
That's what we're projecting, potential categorical reimbursement. That's what we're projecting. So if you're looking at the chart, there's a fund that, these funds, we basically took the dollar amount that we received from the elementary school in Foster and the dollar amount we received on the elementary schools in Gloucester. And we take the amount of that expense for transportation that is in grade six to 12. And so the expense that's in grade six to 12 gets combined with some expenses we have at the region, and those all go to the state. And we've been receiving approximately $529,000 from the state. We've been receiving about 300, a little over 300. Now we're receiving a little over 500, and that's only on grades six to 12. If we were regionalized grades K to 12, we'd also be getting reimbursement on the elementary portion of the transportation. Right now, the busing to bring kids to the elementary schools gets no assistance from the state whatsoever. And so we were predicting, by calculating those out, the potential categorical reimbursement from the state, when fully funded, at 50% would be another $458,000. At the current percentage rate, we're predicting it to be about $348,000. And just so you know, the state has a law that says they'll fund that transportation at 50%, and they've been kind of going up over time, but they're not at 50% yet. So that's why, at the current percentage, it's $348,000. If the state finally moves to full funding, it would be 458, but we use the smaller number, because that's the current percentage we are at right now.
Right, so we're trying to be conservative on this. Is there a difference between if only Foster regionalizes or if both?
So if only Foster regionalized, for example, then Foster would receive reimbursement on their K to five expenses, but Gloucester would not. So the busing costs from Gloucester would not be reimbursed, because they're, and vice versa. If only Gloucester regionalized, they'd get a reimbursement, K to five, in Foster.
So are these, what are these numbers based on?
So these numbers are based on both towns regionalizing. So translation, Foster's expenses are about one-third of Gloucester's expenses. So if you look at that $348,000, Foster would be, if only Foster regionalized, just the town of Foster would benefit by about $115,000, to quantify. So that number of 348 is both Gloucester and Foster combined.
And what percentage of our budget does that represent? So $115,000 would be?
About $115,000 would be just under 3%. So with a budget of about 4.5 million, every $45,000, not local appropriation, every $45,000 is about a sense of $90,000, or it's $90,000 and change now, about $95,000, but that would be 2%, so it's about halfway between 2% and 3%. Just doing the math in my head.
Anyone can come up to the oak table if you want to. Do you have more?
I'll make the cup and give it to you.
I have some extras.
Oh, okay. Wait, that's right, yeah. Thanks. Sure.
I'll save one for me.
How long do you need that one? And will you guys?
Thank you.
Did you have other, yeah, behind?
What would it look like if only Foster did it? Not, fingers, indicate, what would that look like? How would we benefit?
Right.
How would that help us? When, let's be honest, they're not opening their arms and saying, oh.
Well, we already share a superintendent, so that's one thing that would not change.
But we only share a superintendent at the secondary level. He is not superintendent in Gloucester.
Oh, right, no.
So how would that?
How would it affect Gloucester?
How would it, how would it affect us? I mean, we still have, I don't see how that changes us.
Will we eliminate the salary of our superintendent? That's not how it changes the picture of how schooling education happens. It's just weird.
So we, okay.
So to answer your question in two ways, there are some financial benefits to that one piece we just talked about, which, again, if only Foster did it, it would be about $115,000. If both communities did it, it would be about $348,000, using current figures from the state. There would also be, there's also an additional reimbursement that is in state law that says, then I'll talk about education and.
That's what I'm interested in, thank you.
The second piece of the, of the potential financial savings is, there's now a state law that says over four years, so it's doesn't, it's not effective just today. It's at 1.5% this year, going up to 2, then 2.5, then 3. All school districts in the state are going to have to spend and put into their budget 3% of their operating costs.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements, correct. Now, right now, the town of Foster is receiving about 35 cents on the dollar, meaning whenever you spend $100, the state gives you back 35. Now, if we were regionalized, there's a state law that says you get 2% per grade. So the community of Gloucester, I'm sorry, the community of Foster and the community of Gloucester, if they so chose to regionalize, would receive an additional 26%. So instead of having 35%, you'd get 45, 55, you'd get 61%. So right now, if we spend $1 million on repairs here, the state gives us back $350,000. If we, if we were regionalized K to 12, when we spent $1 million, the state would give us back $610,000.
And that's just on capital?
That's only capital improvement.
Can I ask a question? Can I get a turn? On the capital. And I understand the letter that we got from Gloucester was kind of calling it to the point. But I think, even if we let them know that, we don't care if they regionalize, and I know I've said this before, but don't hold the town of Foster back if we should so chose, and I don't think that point was given to them good enough, because they need to understand, like you just said, with both them, we're up around 60%, but with just Foster going in, even if they don't fully regionalize, by default, don't they receive some capital improvement on their end, the same percentage with Foster in it?
So they would benefit a small amount. So capital projects on, capital projects done on this building would increase from 35% to 61. The region, the middle school and high school, already receive a, a portion of the bonus. So because we'd be at, we already receive 14%, if we regionalized K to 12.
Just Foster.
With just Foster, the regional school district would get a blended rate of that. We say, the way that Rye would do it would be, if both towns regionalized, we'd get an extra 12% at the region for the sixth grades. But if only one town regionalized, they wouldn't, they wouldn't give us the full 12%. They'd give us the proportional. Assuming they did proportional on the size, we'd get a minimum of 4% extra at the region.
Which would benefit them by 4%.
Which would benefit Gloucester just by default.
Correct. I think we may want to express that to them, that don't hold us back, and by allowing us to do it, they benefit.
Well, some of us felt that K to 12, both towns, was best, so we tried that first. And now that's why we wanted to talk to you too, is, are we interested in trying to pursue now that they're saying no to that? Are we interested in talking about K to 12?
A question.
I'm also, I'm just going to call the Gloucester school for any meetings or whatever.
With you.
A question.
7:15.
We've heard, and I'm assuming a lot of people know the benefits to full regionalization. That's been discussed. Given what Gordon just said, there's a little benefit. What do you have to offer them as a negotiating tactic to sweeten their pie, to make them want to do this? Because they have absolutely no reason to be nice to us. So you must go to them, I mean, being nice, writing a nice letter, ask them to help, tell them they're going to get a piece, but what's going to sweeten the pie for them? Like, what are you looking at to entice them to this negotiation? And allow you to do it?
They have nothing to lose.
Yes, they do.
What do they have to lose?
They have vengeance to lose. And they're, and they're, and they're, they're impressing, they're vengeance on us. So, so as long as that group stays in power, Kathy, the people that have been there through, Michael, through the whole regionalization process, until that group lets go with that power structure, this is going to be a hard sell, until you have something to offer them.
Look, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Barnes, one of the things that they have to lose is their rating on state testing, which might not be a big thing here, but to parents, it's a big thing. Their ratings are higher than ours. If we merge, we're going to bring them down. We'll go up, but they'll come down too. That's a big thing for some parents.
That's a good, that's a real good point.
That's a good point, absolutely. And one of the things, we, we talked a lot about the test scores. We were, that Lighthouse grant was a recognition on personalized learning, the things that really mattered for kids in the classroom. That was a huge grant that we got picked for. I believe they applied for that also, Dr. Barnes?
I don't know that answer.
Yeah, so anyway, we have a lot of things going for us. The, the test scores have been cyclical also. There were times in the not-so-recent past where.
I don't hope a lot of stopping.
Yeah, no, that's okay, you're right.
I, as a former educator, no. I know what goes on in the classrooms, doesn't always reflect on state testing.
I don't think if we regionalized just us, that that would affect, because Gloucester's its own district, right? So if we regionalized.
If only Foster regionalized, it wouldn't impact Gloucester's test score.
But getting them to, the point is, if we want them to merge with us and do a full regionalization, that's one of the drawbacks for that.
They, I think that's. This group won't do it.
And that was what.
No.
That's what their letter was.
These boys very adamantly, they, they have no interest.
We're here because we all think that's an option.
That's why I think, moving forward, as Kathleen said, is that, okay, so just beginning about Gloucester being a full regionalization. Moving forward, what would you guys like to do?
I have kind of felt out a couple of Gloucester guys over there, and to be blunt, what they said was, we don't want nothing to do with it. We probably wouldn't care if you went in.
I've heard that.
We just don't know why you want to do it. And, and there's a personal background with it, and I understand that, but it's not what Ron is saying. They really don't care if we do, they think we're making a mistake, but it's not their mistake.
They have different finances too, right, Gordon? They're in a completely different financial situation. I think this town could use a penny that we could city.
I've also been told by Gloucester that if they could get out of the regionalized secondary, they would.
I mean, it's about control also, because they want to go to an all-day rest program, they want to open.
Yeah.
It's about control, a huge part of it is about control, as far as the budget and as far as about that. I mean, that's a big deal. So I agree with Gordon. I don't think, if they can gain 4%, put a dollar amount on them, and that is a sweet, if it just happens $1,000.
We have to talk about it.
If it's $50,000, it's something. That would definitely sweeten the pot, I think.
It would give them something, some incentive. At the moment, you know, they're very reluctant.
I think they're reluctant on a total regionalization. I really don't think they're reluctant on allowing us.
And that's good to hear, we hadn't even really talked to them. Understood the issue.
No, I just had a question. I understand where these calculations come from, but what does the state, why is the state incentivizing larger districts? Do they really think there are cost savings in personnel, or reporting to them, does it reduce the state workload? Because a lot of the things that you could save, you have already done in terms of curriculum. You can coordinate things without being fully regionalized. So why is the state offering such incentives?
So regionalization has been, you know, one of those things talked about at the state level for years, and then different people will run for office and say, well, you have these six big districts, or whatever the magic number is.
Each with an assistant superintendent or a principal to manage locally.
Solid all the services.
Reporting to, you know, I, I don't see where personnel savings are.
The school committee's association does, and I'll go right back to the state in one second, but the school committee association had done, compiled some research at one point, where Tim Duffy, the executive director, was saying that finding the kind of sweet spot is about, is between 3,500 and 4,000 kids. Beyond that, you start to have extra layers of management. No idea, a person, just for mathematics, a person just for some. So they kind of found that to be an efficient sweet spot for personnel. And most districts in our state kind of fall under that, except for the ones that is the problem, it's a duckett. But there's a number of districts who are small like us. So the state, for a period of time, had the desire to regionalize. So for example, that extra 2% I said for capital projects, that's been on the books since I've been associated with Foster, Gloucester Schools, for just 30 years. So that's something the state put in state law years and years ago. It's, it's continued since then, so. So I do believe they do, that they think there's some level of efficiency to be had, and, and a number of school systems have done that. And you've got places like Little Compton, who they just write a check to, to another school system because they don't want K to eight school. Same thing for Jamestown. So there are some communities that don't have high schools, and they write a check to another district for every kid who goes. But there has been a push of the state, not, not recently with law changes, but it was done decades ago, and those laws are still in the books.
One of the things too, I know that people were concerned, have mentioned, is that if we do this K to 12 with just Foster, the six Gloucester members are going to have more votes than the Foster members. So just to share my thoughts on that, was that when we're talking about kids there, it really doesn't seem like we talk about them in terms of, I want this to only benefit the Foster kids. Gloucester only wants it to benefit the Gloucester kids. I think genuinely speaking, people are all for improving education, that benefits the district, the community. And so, you know, I don't think that's as big of an issue. It could, and then really, Rye is taking care of the issues of maintaining buildings. They're now requiring that each community maintains their buildings. And I can't imagine that if Gloucester's members were responsible for our schools, that they would neglect our schools. And I think we also had, had a possible charter consideration where we.
Each town maintain.
Each town maintain their own buildings. Exactly, so.
So just to, to share that for the larger room, we, in some of the subcommittee meetings that had happened, and Gloucester town council members did attend, Foster town council members on different times, school committee members, but one of the considerations is the middle school and high school, whenever we do a capital project, both towns pay for that. But to handle the concern of, well, would Gloucester only invest in new roofs for its Gloucester schools? We've, the consideration seemed to be, if we made Foster 100% financially responsible for the improvement of the Foster Elementary School, and Gloucester 100% responsible for the improvement of the Gloucester Elementary Schools, then each community can say, this, you know, we can afford an extra $100,000 for a roof, or we can't.
Now, the files of housing needs separate as well, right? Because then that means that any housing need on our projects, at that higher rate, went to our.
Correct.
Foster, the town of Foster.
Correct. So.
Yeah, I, if you remember, that was one of my big concerns on, really, the only thing, they, if they're going to get Humpty Dumpty for Gloucester, by default, Foster's going to get it. My concern was the capital improvements that they would neglect this side of town, they don't have voters on that as well.
And we also said we would maintain a school in Foster, so that we wouldn't, also would put some provision that said that we couldn't.
In the charter.
We wouldn't be told to move to Gloucester, which technically isn't even possible, but although there's some room in those elementary schools, when the roof collapsed, we did not all fit in Gloucester schools. And now we have, you know, it just, it doesn't.
So we could address that, that concern regardless, because we already talked about it with our attorney, about doing bulk last meeting.
Well, not only that concern, but what about if the thought were, let's center all the early childhood in one building, and then, you know, and upper elementary in the other town, yes, there's a building here, but.
Transportation can only be, isn't there restrictions with transportation? You can't be on the bus more than.
But that wouldn't be a concern anyway, because Gloucester's not going to regionalize with us. So that would, it would only be like the.
They really aren't. They're.
That, that's ship sail, they have no desire. It would be.
So then, back to my original question, what would that look like physically and staff-wise, et cetera, here? I mean, I know that there were times when we have low numbers in classrooms, and we have staff because of contractual needs. So how would that look?
So regionalizing would not really change, unless we were regionalized K to 12, both were both towns. But if only Foster was regionalized, it wouldn't change the staffing pattern for teachers and teacher assistants, quite frankly, at all.
Because there are contracts within town districts.
Right. You know, there's, the contract says you can have 20 kids per class at the primary grades, like kindergarten, first grade. You can have, you know, 23 as you go into second and third, and 25. So short answer is, to keep the mathematics simple, whether we're regionalized or not, if we have 48 kids, we need two fifth grades. Whether we're regionalized or not, we have 52 kids, we need three fifth grades. It's, there's a teacher's contract that's 25 per class, that wouldn't change at all, because it'd be the same as it is now.
They don't get a stipend if they're over one?
They do get a stipend if they're over one.
What's the max that can go?
I believe it's two that would go over.
Yeah.
Two or three, and then after that, you have to open up.
But it's more the savings more in administrative positions, like business manager, superintendent. That's where the. We didn't touch that part, did you want to also say about savings?
So we did speak about, so, and so if we sidetracked it in kind of the middle of the financial page, you can see that Gloucester has a part-time superintendent, who they paid $53,000 to, a part-time superintendent, excuse me, here, and Foster is receiving $30,000, that would be me. And they used to have a two-day-a-week superintendent. One of the benefits to us doing a quasi-sheared service like this is, when you have, like the Gloucester superintendent goes to the exact same meetings I do, but when I'm going to a meeting, I'm, I was already going to that meeting for the regional schools. So when I go to a state-level meeting, I'm now going to the, the same meeting for three schools instead of two. So previous superintendents to me had been two days a week, and I do it, you know, I'm able to do it mostly in about a day a week when negotiations, it takes more time, but that's one of the reasons the salary is lower than the salary in Gloucester, because that person needs to spend more time in district to basically attend the same meetings I do, and then do the meetings in her own district. But we also, so we basically projected that we would be able to save the salary of the superintendent, there's a salary of a secretary, and then a salary of a business manager. Now, I'll be crystal clear, to merge the books, that takes a little bit of time, that doesn't happen overnight, and I'll tell you, when Gloucester took back the elementary schools from the regional superintendent prior to my coming on board, they spent some time and effort on that. So we did project that those could be savings, but we did project, if we were regionalized K to 12, there would need to be some additional staff at the business office at the region, but that's, the staff we'd have to ask, add at the business office would be less than the staff we're saving. So we'd be able to cut salaries, but then what we were projecting to take on as staff would be below that dollar amount. So there would be some staff savings. And one last thing I'll say is, there's a note here at the bottom of the page, we didn't even calculate some of the other savings that the town of Gloucester could potentially have, because it's not my business to tell them the savings in their books. But when they took over the elementary schools, they had three people in their finance department, and now they cover, their budget for this present year had 4.5 people in the finance department. So since taking over the elementary schools, they had to add staff. So I use that just as an example to say, there is a, regardless of being regionalized, there's still paperwork that comes from ordering things for more people. So we would project a increase in staff at the region, but an increase of less, you know, the dollar amount for that would be less than the staff we're removing from the overhead of Foster Public Schools right now.
So what is the business office look at Payne School? How many staff?
So Payne School has a part-time business manager who's retired, so he works 90 days a week, type 90.
Wow.
Yeah. Very hard-working guy.
He is, I know he is. I didn't think he was that good.
He is actually a very hard worker.
He is, yes, I know.
So he works 90 days a year as a retiree, has a.
Does he do 90 days here, or is he working with Situit?
He was doing some time with Situit, so he was doing, because Situit had some difficulties in their business office.
So now he's not, he's back here for nine days?
He's no, he's not doing any more time for Situit. They hired a person, so he's back there.
So he's 90 days here. So that's a happy person.
Correct. And then we have a secretary who does supports, and that was Helena, who just retired, but we had a secretary who supported the business managers, so she served as a financial clerk, but she also did some support of the superintendent and the school committee serving as a clerk. So we had one person who kind of supported two different offices, supported the.
So it's probably one person, because you've got to have the business.
Correct.
Manager and then that clerk.
Correct.
And what, what do you have at the regional level? How many business people are in that office?
So at the regional level, for our business, we have a business manager, an accountant, a payroll clerk, because we brought payroll in-house instead of writing a check to an external agency. And then we have a person who does all the purchase orders, meaning we need 5,000 pencils, they order 5,000 pencils, make sure we've got 5,000 pencils, and then we pay the bill. So there's four staff members in the financial office at the region.
Do you have any clerks there?
Well, that's, three of them are financial secretaries, three of them, I'm sorry, apologize. Two of them are financial secretaries, one being payroll, one being accounts payable and receivable, and the other one being an accountant. So there's one who's a manager, one who's an accountant, and then the two who would, you would call clerks. We call them financial secretaries.
You would call Gary Pacino a clerk?
His, well, that would be your equivalent, we call him a financial secretary.
Okay.
And he was a phenomenal hire, I just want to say.
Yes, 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 yes.
So Mike, what would the dollar amount be? Because you were going back and forth about salaries. So you have down here $101,000 savings, but then you're saying you'd have to add staff a little bit at the high school.
Correct.
So what are you looking at, about $60,000, $70,000?
So our prediction, so I'll do the two numbers, I'll take them right off the page. We took the Gloucester expenses of $64,000, the Foster expenses of 101, because some of the Gloucester expenses are not included in that 64, remember they hired a person and a half? So I'm not calculating that in the 64, I'm only doing the superintendent and the superintendent secretary.
I would just do awesome, that's why I would just think.
If we're, if it's not happening, I just want to hear what.
Questions. Exactly. So it'd be 65, right?
Well, the number we had, so I, there's a reason I want to walk through it a book. The savings for all three, we were predicting to be 165, and the additional expense, we were predicting to be 80. Now, that additional expense was with us being, all three elementary schools coming on board. So my guess is we probably would have to do that for about half of that. Because there's some things that are, there's some things that take the exact same amount of time, whether you're doing it for 10 people or 20 people.
So there'll probably be about a savings of approximately $60,000.
A savings of, I would say approximately 60.
Okay.
Our initials, our initial projection was 165, and we'd be replacing with 80. So if we did the 101, I think we could do it for about half of that.
So right with the transportation, that we're about at 170, 175,000?
When you add the two, and then what do you choose to do for capital? And our capital projection that you see on this paper, although the state law says 3%, we built these numbers at 2%, because we wanted to be conservative. You know, we didn't want to say, hey, you'll save 800, and you only save 700. We'd rather say, they'll save 600, and then we save 700. So we're trying to be conservative in our projections as to what we thought would be reasonable. And the one unknown that I honestly can't answer the question, I can answer the question about what happens if both towns regionalize. It's very clear we would get an additional 26% for the elementary and 12 for the region. If only one town regionalizes, Rye would do a blended rate, and they do that calculation, not me.
A blended rate or the Foster blended rate?
They, the region would get a, the region would get a blended rate, and I believe they would probably apply that to the elementary. I just don't have that answer, and I don't get to make that decision.
Can we give an opinion on that?
I can ask.
Because I think that would be an important number to present to Gloucester if we were to report this, because that would benefit them.
Correct. Yeah, I did get a, I did reach out to the finance department for the figures when regionalizing K to 12. I will reach out, finance department at the Rhode Island Department of Education. Yeah, I did get a, I did reach out to the finance department for the figures when regionalizing K to twelve. I will reach out, finance department at the Rhode Island Department of Education. So I'll reach out to them again to get an opinion if only one town would be regionalized.
And how that might affect our neighbors.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I may be applying this question to Connecticut, but are there minimum budget requirements or maintenance of effort laws? And if so, how would these reductions apply? Or would we still have to budget the same or more? Or would the savings, would our money just buy us more and we're not saving anything? Or how do you say calculate that?
There is a maintenance of effort requirement in Rhode Island that exists at kind of the town or the school department level. And my guess would, they would say, you're spending ten million here and five million here, it's fifteen million. That being said, costs go up every single year, so the, I think your money would go further and for a couple of years, some of it might go into fund balance until you catch up. And to be honest, that's some of what happened here in Foster. We had a maintenance of effort requirement, and because we were reducing staff for a period of time, some of the money that used to be going to salary went into fund balance, and that's what the school department used to do a lot of the capital repairs that you have in the school district. So because we were paying X amount for teachers and we had some teachers retire, the maintenance of effort required the town to still give us the same amount, but our expenses got reduced. So that meant we started to put money into fund balance or into a savings account.
But the average taxpayer then didn't see a reduction in their bill.
The average taxpayer didn't see a reduction.
Three hundred thousand dollar heating system, for instance, that we'd have to go to the town.
Right, and then you don't have to, you know, spend more, but...
Right.
And people need to understand that their bill isn't going to necessarily be less, their own tax bill, that's all.
We're trying to minimize increases. Yeah, I mean, we're coming to it this so that we don't have to go...
Things are just going between health insurance and... Taxes on steps, steps. I mean, there's so much, so many costs that we have no control of.
We went, when Shelley and I first got on, all the teachers were step ten, Ron was on then too. Since then, all the teachers are on the lower steps, so every year we have a certain number of fixed costs. So we're gonna, it's just, it's predictable and it's going this way. So we're trying to find a way to minimize it. So we just want to know if, we're not going to make a decision to do it or not do it tonight. We want to know if you're interested in us taking in, taking in that staff.
And if you are, to speak, well, for them to speak to the Gloucester Town Council, perhaps.
And what that conversation would look like too, I think that's important, what facts we're going forward with, who's leaving that charge, and what the schedule would be for that exercise too, I think that's an important thing.
I think we better, if the actual Foster Town Council presented it to them. I think that, so I think once you get the number from Mike about what the increase would be for the region, which will be a savings for them in their tax dollars, the regional cost, I think, once you have that information, I think it's ideal for the town council itself, whoever their representative is going to be, to go forward. Because I think the school commission stay out of it personally.
It's gotten heated and so it's just not productive, it's, lines have been drawn.
I will say, I mean, for quite a few years, the unique difference between Foster and Gloucester is since around two thousand and ten moving forward, whatever council was on has had a great relationship with any school committee that was on in this town. And it really shows a benefit of actually working together in contrast to what you see in Gloucester. And even tonight shows how you're putting a game plan together, you're on the same boat and the facts. I mean, I trust Dr. Barnes, I've trusted him for years, and that's what it comes down to, trusting both sides. And when we were on a council with Denise and everybody else, we worked together knowing that, you know, we needed your help sometimes, and the same with the other way, you needed our help. And that's really key in this town, I think.
Well, it's all the same money, right? It's funding the town and the schools, everybody's, it's not like it's different people.
And I've said it a million times, you guys have heard this out of me a million times. Your values of your homes, people may complain about the cost of the schools, but at the end of the day, the values and the equity in your community, the single biggest factor on that is your community's school system. That doesn't mean we can't save money and not work together, but that is a key component, I say it time and time again. So, my two cents.
And what would this take to make it happen? Does it take charter change and...
It takes several things, charter change, school committee has to go to it.
Doesn't have to be several years, we could get on the, you could get it on the ballot for twenty-twenty.
That's what we were talking about initially, as we were giving ourselves twenty-twenty. We wanted to do a lot of community meetings to let people hear about what the changes would mean to our community, Gloucester's community. This is like our first step to see, because if you all are not interested in this, there's no reason us spending a lot of time on getting the numbers to research, yeah.
I think, I, well, I don't want to speak on her behalf, but we do know that we have one council member who's been opposed to it.
Right, yes, she's been very open about it, yeah.
She's been very open, and she's not here tonight, so I don't want to put words in her mouth. I'm not sure with Mr. Cardillo where he stands.
So you can bring it back to your council and...
I was going to, I did put down to bring it back to the council. I know Kelly had some questions too, had some concerns, and she couldn't make tonight's meeting. So I was looking to bring it back to our council for the twenty-eighth, not the fourteenth, because we know the fourteen...
Because we have four public areas.
We have four public areas, my worry add a...
No more stuff.
But, so for the twenty-eighth, so that we could discuss this at that point.
One other piece was that, and I've talked to Kelly about this a little, the way the charter is now and how the amount we pay is determined is based on the student shift's number. And I think one of the things that makes sense, and I can't speak for everybody, that we should, we should probably calculate it based on, we've talked about property house values, something like that. So it's not like we're paying tuition to our own school based on the number of kids we're sending. It's based more proportionately on the overall property house values of each town, which is a much different, could be a different calculation than the number of kids.
I know Kelly had some...
And I agree with her concern, so that could also be something to talk about in the charter.
Because that shift is difficult to plan for.
Or at least, spreading that out over a few years, so annualizing it so that we have, it's not one dramatic shift. There's a way to do that, you know, that's above my accounting pay grade, but rather than these one-year dramatic swings, it's brutal for the community to get hit with it.
Right, and it's either town. But if Gloucester right now is getting hit...
They're getting whacked this time around.
That's yes and no, because again, we are fiscally responsible by setting the swing. So we actually do that fiscally on the town side, but then you can get a different council that decides not to.
You need to set aside.
We set aside when you get a big chunk, because we know it's going to swing the other way. And when it starts swinging the other way, we start using that, we almost, so we make it, we even it out by putting the ashtray in. But that should probably be something that can be written in stone, so that can't be undone when you get somebody in that can change that.
Right. Is that calculated on the number of students who went the year before?
The previous year, right, yeah.
And that's computed at the end of the budget rather than planned ahead of the budget?
Right, it's hard to know, you can't, it's based on the actual enrollment.
Yes and yes.
All right, I'll give you a more detailed intro in one second.
Is anybody written through Gloucester in the last ten years? The houses they're building in Gloucester are more attuned to the houses built in Massachusetts. And so them, when they calculate the value of their housing, they'll get crushed. So that, that's just not going to, I mean, let me, I don't know this, but when they calculate those two values, that's a non-flyer.
I think we can look at different ways to calculate it. And yeah, it's a consideration for sure, I agree with property.
There has to be a different way.
And another thing we have to do too is have the reevaluations done in the same year.
Correct.
Otherwise, one is getting reevaluated, all of their property value is going to be, it's going to be a huge amount, so...
It's, but you're right, they, one of the council members spoke to me the other night and said that one of the things that are helping them is FM Global. And they're having big houses built, so they're getting more tax dollars added.
So their revenue stream is up, and they're not going to let you dip into it, there it comes.
And that was basically what she was talking to me about.
That property value does affect their contribution to the debt service though, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, there was about a ninety thousand dollar swing towards Gloucester this year. So because the two towns use statistically evaluations in different years, one town's property value goes up the next year, so trying to even that out would be helpful.
I think even the annualized, annualization of that does sort of make increases a little more predictable too. You'll see what Gloucester's contributions this year, on paper, whether they're going up six percent or seven percent in the region, part of that's due to their actual basis being reduced, about two hundred thousand dollars last year because of the swing. So I think there's an accounting reason for this.
Correct, so they had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that swing we talked about with student population. With the last two years, they had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in their favor, or they had to pay two hundred and thirty thousand dollars less. So if they bank that whole amount, they can take this, whatever they're going to hit there. So I understand, I'm just saying, as Mr. Rogers had said, that if you bank the whole amount, you can, they could offset their cost by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which it does, this is my personal view. When the windfall comes or when the student swing comes, if you bank a hundred percent of it, because it literally, that gets made up in the next year, so you do have to put it away.
It's bound money, it's not something you can...
No, and we've put it aside, knowing that we were going to get hit again.
And that was very wise.
Anything else on regionalization?
No, I did make a note that I would put it on for February twenty, the council meeting.
Any other questions?
In two thousand nineteen, not seventeen.
I think you touched on it briefly, but there's also a benefit academically too. And we already do have somewhat of an overlap with our superintendents, but the curriculum would be a little bit more seamless. We're pretty open here in inviting the middle-schooler teachers to come down in the aisle and see what we're doing. But when they're actually part of the same district, it's a little more seamless. So there's a benefit to students potentially, and that there's just an easier transition as they go up.
Especially with teachers working together, like with the following grades, knowing that their kids are going to be prepared for, the fifth-grade teachers, for instance, working with the sixth-grade teachers to make sure that they're going to be prepared in certain areas, what has to be touched on. Now there's really, there's still a disconnect, even though we have the same superintendent, they're not, if they don't do PD together, they're not on the same, because we still are two separate districts. So educationally, there's a very big, there's a, there's a big deal there. It's a huge gain, because the kids, the kids are missing out right now.
Okay, so the next agenda item is three-year budget forecast and future budget forecasts. So this is, this is just on here so that we can, you know, we present our budgets to you, you guys, you know, approve or don't approve it. So you know what your budget forecasts are for the next few years. And I guess we're trying to do our best, but because all these teachers are on the steps, we know we're going to have to increase a certain amount each year. And I think it's helpful to know what your expectations are from us. And maybe you need to have a further conversation with the whole council about, you know, what numbers can this town sustain? Because we can't operate independently. What we do that impacts you guys, we need to try to work together on that. So I guess it's just a proactive conversation about you guys talking about, you know, several years out with percentages. I mean, we're, without doing anything, wasn't it four percent a year we were going to have to go up? Dr. Barnes, that was without us really working on it. So that's not to say we're going to bring that forward, but...
I believe that was four with, that wasn't actually a balance four. I think that was four, the goal was four, we still were a little bit in the red with that position.
Right, so, and I know for the last few years, the budgets we've submitted to the town have, we've brought forward zero, but we've been foreshadowing that our cost, you know, we've been carrying four percent going forward. And we're pretty much at the place where you're going to start to see that. And part of the reason is, as was said before, when you go back ten years, every teacher in Foster was on ten step. So if you gave the teachers a two percent raise or a two and a half percent raise, that means salary went up two percent or two and a half percent for every teacher. Right now, about half the teachers are on ten step, and about half the teachers are on steps one to nine. What that means is, if you give a two or two and a half percent raise, half the teachers are getting that two and a half, let's call it two to keep the math simple, half the teachers are getting that two percent raise. The other teachers are getting the two percent in and moving up a step, which means they're getting a ten or eleven percent raise. So when you have half your people getting a ten percent raise, and half your people getting a two percent raise, it averages up to six percent. And that's what's been happening on the salary side. The town hasn't necessarily felt the pain of that, because at the same time, all the teachers were on average going up six percent, we were able to reduce one teacher this year. So the fact that we went from, you know, twenty-three to twenty-two basically meant that although everyone else who was still there was getting on average six percent, that one teacher was no longer there, so it kind of was a wash. And that's happened for a couple of years. We're now at the point where after this year, all of our grades will have two teachers per grade. So we used to have three teachers per grade, and then a lot of the grades had three and one of the grades had two, and then lesser the grades had three and more of the grades had two. Now we're getting to the point as we graduate our fifth-grade class where we're pretty much looking at teams of, you know, two teachers all the way up. So our ability to offset that average of a six percent raise is about to go away.
I mean, it looks like on this, on our budget forecast, just not a firm number, anywhere between forty and eighty thousand a year is just instruction going up, just based on step increases. And that's not even, does that include healthcare when it says instruction here, is that...
And that forty to eighty is also, you know, we're looking at all across all staff members, but again, we had some reductions of people too. Then you have the separate benefits, which we've been predicting in the six to ten range, and that's where they've been coming in in different years. We get numbers from our insurance carrier and they vary based on, this year someone got cancer, this year someone didn't. So your costs vary from year to year based on how healthy your people were from year to year. Someone gets into a car accident, or someone doesn't. All those things impact your, your cost, and so if something happens this year, your bill goes up next year.
What is our enrollment this year?
It's in the two fifty-seven or so.
Really, that's long.
Two fifty to two sixty.
I have it here, it's eighteen nineteen, it was two seventy-one. But that may not be correct on here, is that...
Correct, but we also, that's with the preschoolers. So when you take the preschoolers out, so I'm doing the K to five side, the preschoolers have bumped our numbers up.
And that number includes the preschoolers?
Two seventy-one equals...
But we, no, the preschoolers, although there's thirty of them, we count them as fifteen because they have the half a day.
Right, half a day, oh, okay.
So cost per student?
I'd have to calculate that off, I don't have that in my head.
Two fifty, what, how many, five point seven million?
Ryan Haddas, I thought it was at like fifteen-five. We were, we were close to the state average in Foster, and the region was higher because of other...
But the number of costs is five point what million?
Four point five.
Four point five? Okay.
That's going up, but...
Our enrollment's predicted to be stable for the next few years and then eventually hopefully tick back up again, which we might find a little...
Yeah, there's kind of people throwing numbers like nineteen thousand around.
But it's ridiculously unpredictable, that's one thing that has been eye-opening for me, is that any summer you could have twenty-two that just wander in. So it is, there are wild swings, and especially in a small school like this, it has a terrific impact.
And any one of those children that they require one-on-one, you know, attention, not special?
Or if there's students fifty-one or fifty-two and all of a sudden you need to open another grade, we are close to that.
In many areas, I think, are really closely.
I believe it is.
And truthfully, that's one of the struggles. As much as the taxpayers were able to benefit as we moved from three teachers to two teachers, you know, as the kids moved up, at some point, the people who were empty-nesting or the people who had houses foreclosed and they're selling as those houses start to flip with kids, the people with kids, you know, we're going to start to hit the point where we hit fifty-three, fifty-four in a grade, and then it's a case of actually adding a teacher. In addition to the raises I spoke about, it's also adding, you know, it'd be adding, you know, sixty thousand dollars with us, forty thousand dollar salary and then the benefits, assuming the teacher takes a single plan versus a family plan.
Well, hopefully those are the people who are on the tax freeze that are now going to be bumped up to...
So this is why we're again bringing up the regionalization, because we're wondering how are we thinking through this as a town? If we don't do anything differently...
We're looking for new ways to reduce those expenses.
And both regionalizations.
Right, so that's one of our...
To your point, Ms. Christian, people won't necessarily see a tax reduction, but instead of seeing a four percent, they might see a one percent. So it'll bend the rate of increase, but because of maintenance of effort, you're not going to see your taxes drop from one year to the next.
Yeah, it's really important for people to now...
You're right, it would be a misconception, people would think that their taxes are going to go down.
Where it's going, yeah, we need to be, it's going to prevent them from going up and skyrocketing, right?
That's, that's by law, no matter who's sitting in these seats.
But it's a good sort of cap on how much they can go, except all still, you can't grade as well.
The town can't, right?
The town can't, yeah.
Did you want to talk about anything else with regards to budget forecast? Or do you want to talk to the council? We're just looking for some feedback from you guys about...
We're doing our best here, but unfortunately, there's only so much we can do. There's so many requirements by RIDE and...
Yep, we know.
I think that variability requirement is important, and that's too, because sometimes our budgets do come across as being conservative. But we do need to be careful about how we're planning for each year, because we do have literally a dozen children wandering in because the school buses drive them by the first day, and they go, oh my gosh, I need to enroll my child. And we can't come back to you for more money to make sure that...
It's laughing when this stuff happens, it's crazy.
I know.
So it happened, does it ever happen the other way?
You do have some, absolutely, that, you know, you expected to have twenty-one in the class and you have twenty or nineteen. We've been really lucky, I'm seriously, been really lucky, that when we've had surprises, they've been in the grades where we could have dropped them. Knockout would have been a good thing. But then you also have, you know, every now and then you'll have a state placement of a student or a family will walk in with, you know, a needy child, etc., that may require a one-on-one assistance, so...
Yeah, grade four's on the brink. I mean, literally, if one other student comes into grade four, you would have to, you'd have to make agreements with staff or the elements of the class.
Do you often do memorandums of agreement?
We have in the past when Shelley and I were...
And one of the things we did...
They agreed to help us, I mean, right, they're...
But that's not philosophically sound education-wise to have ten or twelve kids in a classroom, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That's just not...
Right. So you did, you do a memorandum of understandings that a teacher has one kid more, she slips on by contract and she gets compensated and a stipend or something.
They get that now, they're compensated there.
Well, because the situation is, if the budget's already stoned and then that happens, you can't come back to the town council and say, oh, we have a problem.
And teachers have worked with us, I mean, they've been very fortunate.
Yeah. In the last, in the last contract negotiations, this one of the one three years ago, thank you. Since I, yeah, we did make an adjustment to that language where it actually doesn't require a memorandum of anymore. We actually now have the ability to add the one or the two versus having to negotiate that, which the language basically required, you know, some level of agreement. Now we get... Now we get to the, be a couple additional we can add and then after that we have to go to agreement. So it gives us a little wiggle room. You know, we do have very, our teachers have been collaborative and very responsive. You know, they do get the budgetary considerations too.
So it'd probably be helpful to know what your fixed increases are annually. I'm sure as a town you have certain, not the capital, but your salaries. You know, you have employees. And so if we look at with both of our fixed costs that we really can't do much of anything about and see where that puts us, then we could at least try to work together.
Yeah.
Try to get through it.
Mr. Do the laws require you to have a strict, like say, fourth grade and a third grade? Or if you have two half-classes, can you combine third and fourth and our own teacher in that?
We talked about that before. That has, is that in the area of contract garden?
There's no law that prevents it. There are some districts who do display classrooms like...
They do it in purpose, too, sometimes.
We have done it before here.
Yeah. And we talked about it when we were in the opposite position of more kids and it was something we, there was, a lot of parents don't like that idea. There was a lot of...
Because if you're the younger class, it benefits, but the younger one you want. You feel that your child's being held back and it's not beneficial to your child.
You tell it as mentoring that this child is helping this other child, you know? They'll, they'll learn more by mentoring.
That would be something we would talk about if we got to that point where we were, right, gonna have to open a classroom because of two kids.
It's an option.
Yeah. So anything else on that one? So the last topic was capital projects. And we wanted to talk about that one because again, predictability is good. So we do have this, because of the retirements, we started that capital fund where we put money in from surplus over a certain amount into this capital fund to spend. And we have this pile of money that can either be spent evenly over a number of years to sort of minimize the impact on the town or you can tell us, spend it all this year because we don't want to cover anything of the schools this year. So I think part of what we wanna do is say to you, we have a certain number, Dr. Burns, do you have the sheet that predicts this?
So is she at this one first or this one?
A little over forty-five thousand a year, yeah. So we took a look at how much to try, our capital projects team. Brendan, did you wanna talk about this one?
No, I think you're doing a great job. I think I just, it's worth mentioning too that the state is requiring us to fund a specific amount of maintenance each year out of our budget. We're working up to three percent.
It's two percent, one per table?
It's one.
Oh, it's one.
One and a half.
Oh, okay.
Let me get up to three, three.
It works up to three over four or five years.
Mr. Chippendale is working on something with the towns that have kept. There are a lot of city towns to look into. The towns, cities and towns that have maintained their buildings. And to see if that can be improved within saying here, we spent this much money on our buildings to maintain them. Can that go forward in the future?
So in our meetings with Ryan, they've been quite clear that we, at the moment, we need to spend that money at a given year. We can't annualize it over a couple of years. For example, when we did our heating system, we hit that was a five hundred thousand dollars. We couldn't count that towards two years. That would be only one year, so it's going to be what all the maintenance is. So at the moment, we're budgeting under the current rules.
Right, I'm just saying.
We certainly react to anything that's important. I think that's a reasonable approach because some of these districts have done a better job maintaining facilities. I think here in this town, we do have to accept that back to the building. His older parts of it do require continued and ongoing maintenance. And that's something that we've tried to make an effort to identify here in our plan. But we've tried to make it predictable for the town moving forward. So we average, I think it's about, what, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year of expenses, give or take a hundred and sixty-five, give or take. Some projects cost more and that's the budgeted dollar size, obviously what's spent. The doctor's plan is that logical.
Right, so one of the things, so we kind of built this and no one would get too close to the three. So if you look at the very first column that talks about capital expenditures, we currently have a five-year plan that we'll be talking about in a little more detail. That's kind of the fourth agenda item for the town council. We have a five-year plan that we're looking to submit to the state that has about a million dollars worth of expenses in that right now. And part of the reason we're looking to submit that to the state is they just passed the bond that authorizes two hundred and fifty million dollars for capital projects for schools. And right now they have incentives in those funds. So in addition to what a community normally receives, the thirty-five percent, you can receive up to an additional twenty percent. There's buckets of five, so if something is energy efficiency, you can receive another five percent. And if something is health and safety, you can receive another five percent. Now, the way that works is if you do a project that is energy efficient and safety at the same time, you get ten percent on the whole thing, the extra ten percent. So they let you bundle them. So we thought it was advantageous to try and move forward with some projects where we could get more than the thirty-five cents on the dollar that we would normally get. So the reason I do that, all that setup is to say the chart that you're looking at has a little over one point three million or one million three hundred and fifty thousand. That's because what we did is we took the one million dollars that we're planning to submit to the state for the next plan along with the three hundred and fifty thousand or so that is from our current plan. So to be able to properly fund this, we said, we've already committed to doing three hundred and fifty thousand with the state. We wanna do another million. Those two numbers together, we need to be able to fund that. So that's why the number that we're trying to fund is one point three five million. So what you're, so what you're looking at in the first column is our planned expenses in each given year. And here's how we were opening this up for a conversation with the council on how to fund that. We were planning to kind of follow the law. So that second column has us with a, in FY twenty, which would be next year, spending about twenty-two thousand dollars out of our operating budget. And then we'd have to increase another half a percent to go up to forty-six thousand and then increase another half a percent to go up to seventy-one and then to ninety-eight. So basically, if you look at the dollar amounts on the left-hand side, we're kind of showing what percentage we're talking about spending is in that second column. So what we'd be talking about is slowly raging, raising the school department budget over a four-year period to get to a point where the school department would be funding two percent of our three percent requirement inside of our operating budget. And then the third, the next column over talks about state housing aid. So whenever you do a capital project, you get some money back from the state. So Cliff's Notes version, to get to the one point three million, we're projecting increasing our operating budget over that five years to get a total of three hundred and forty thousand. The state would give us a total of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand back. And then this is the column that has implications for the town. So to do the three percent that we're looking to do, if you look at one column, so I'll pause and go slow for a second so everyone can follow the two different numbers. One column says school operating budget. And if you look above it, it says the calculated at two percent. There's another column that says town capital fund, that's calculated at one percent. When you put that two percent and the one percent together, that gets to the three percent we're required to by law. And so what the school department was, the conversation with the school committee was, currently the town is taxing or raising capital funds. Two percent of our budget is being raised for capital projects for the town. And so to have a predictable funding source and so that we don't have to raise our budget by three percent, we're requesting that the town on an annual basis allocate one percent of that back. So every single year, based on our four point five million dollar budget, you're collecting about ninety thousand dollars in taxes towards capital funds for the town. And so we're requesting that you return one percent of that per year. And the numbers, if you notice, escalate slightly because we figured one percent in twenty twenty-one would be forty-six thousand, then forty-seven, then forty-nine, then fifty-one. We're projecting that our budgets are gonna go up over the next few years, so that's why that puts. So if we knew that was gonna be a predictable number from the town, two percent is collected on behalf of the schools, we'd be asking for one percent back. We've kind of built this capital plan saying we'll raise, we'll raise our budget by two percent. We'll use one percent that people are already being taxed to kind of get to the three percent.
So you already are, okay? By the state passing a law that we're gonna give you a one percent, a one and a half percent, a two percent, a two and a half percent, a three percent, you're already capturing that money back, so you're double-dipping. So, so let me, let me, well, I'll end it, all right? So what you're asking for on four million, two percent, you're, you're already getting eight thousand or eighty thousand.
So right now...
This year?
This year, the, what the planning board authorized was seventy-five thousand dollars. That's the number we're carrying. It's up to the council to decide if they're gonna honor that number or make it or adjust it. But the planning board, the vote of the planning board was seventy-five thousand.
So, you know, I'm gonna try and re-bring that to the planning board. Second thing is, I'd like to address how the, how the school operates with the planning board. The highway director, when he comes to the council or the planning board, brings bids. When the school committee comes to the planning board, they bring estimates. So an estimate says, I need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a parking lot. I change my mind, the town awards, even if I could say I need a hundred and twenty-five thousand for windows. You change your mind, once we've awarded you that money, it's yours, you've captured it. And what you call savings, I call captured money. So I'm gonna present to the council that the first place the school committee should go should be the highway director to collect bids, to make the presentation of capital projects to the planning board. Because the highway director presented bills, bills, bids for the police station fire, smokestack. You presented to us an estimate the other night for the smokestack here, but in actuality, you should make that presentation to him. He should collect bids and then bring those forward. So what I'm saying is, over the years, you've been capturing money and it comes out of the total capital budget once it's given to you.
We have our own money for the parking lot though, that was our own funds. We were gonna pay for that.
It doesn't matter. When you come to the planning board...
We do, I mean, Dr. Burns, what's the, we talk, we each talk about the process of going for bids and how we need to get approval before we're...
But you can't come to me or the planning board, you can't come to the planning board and say, I'm gonna build a playground for fifty-five thousand and not bring us a picture, an estimate, anything, okay? Why should we okay that?
I think too, if we were gonna go to the public works director, the town council would have to tell us to do that. That's adding...
Well, that's what I'm suggesting to the town council.
Yeah.
And, and then at three percent in X amount of years, there's probably no need. Three percent at four point five million, that's why I asked, that is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of capital expenses a year.
That, that three percent isn't necessarily capital expenses, they're maintenance expenses. So one thing that we're trying to do as part of this is to assign acceptable costs to that line.
Well, what I'm saying is, so what I'm saying is you're getting three percent, which is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in X amount of years. And what you need to operate is a hundred and fifty.
We have specific maintenance costs that aren't, this is like project related, so we can assign some of our operations manager's salary to this, some of his assistant's salary to this and some other work that's done on...
So, but this is a town building, all right? And the highway department or the police station are town buildings and they should be maintained, capital projects should be maintained by the town council.
The council can discuss, if you wanna have...
That's right, that's what I'm trying to present. I didn't mean to bring this up here, but since it's on the agenda, all right? I'm presenting it to the council to try and make a change in how we do business with the school that's a department of the town of Foster. It's not a different, there's nothing difference between this department and the highway department except the highway department gives the money back and you capture it.
So, yeah, I'll respond to a couple of different things. One, as we discussed on the phone, for example, you mentioned about us capturing funds. So last year, we brought proposals to the town through the planning board that included a parking lot and a redistribution of the traffic flow. Although the projects that we brought for the planning board were over two hundred thousand dollars, the planning board only allocated a little over five thousand dollars. The rest of that was one hundred percent funded from the school department or from money we received from the state. So although the dollar amount of that parking lot was over a hundred thousand dollars and the other projects we had made the total over two hundred thousand dollars, the only town funds that got allocated in that was above five thousand.
But what I'm presenting to you is the philosophical ability, not what happened. I'm telling you the philosophic ability of how that could be misused by a different superintendent.
Then what I'll say is there's, there's, there's another piece from a programmatic point of view that the school department has requirements through the state. And when we, we have to do a couple of different things to receive money from the state. So the first thing we do is we do something we did back in September, which is we submit to them a series of projects that we plan to do over the next five years. And then from those projects, we then have to do what we do, what we call a stage two submission, and that's due in mid-February, where we submit like schematics, not full-blown blueprints, but schematics for the projects that you wanna do. And then if the state ultimately approves those in May, then, then we would go and put forward full plans to go into those projects. So we go to the state and say, we plan to do these things over the next five years and we do it at the schematic level. And what we have to do is get estimates from our architects. And the architect will say, right now our estimate's a hundred thousand dollars. If we add fifteen percent a year, we expect that to be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in four years.
Hey, but, but did you come, did you come to the planning board before you went to the state with the schematics?
They're going at the same time, so for example...
But we can't address, right? I would never give somebody the money to build me a house if I didn't have a set of plans. I'm letting go. I, I just heard, I know you're upset Denise, I'm gonna let it...
No, I'm not upset, I'm just wondering if this is the time to be having this conversation.
Well, since you're having, since you're having the discussion about capital projects, I'm trying to present you with the problems that could develop down the road.
Thank you, Dr. Burns.
I'll leave you alone, thank you.
And I think, I think that's why we're trying to have a conversation about this. So our requirement is to send a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars by the state moving forward. That is our requirement based on the three percent of our four point five million dollar budget, which will be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So if we, if it happens that we save money on one project and that money's able to go towards, go towards another project, however, no matter how you cut it, based on the state's requirements, we have to spend a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on capital projects.
So what we're showing here is, do you like our approach, which is to try to minimize your contribution? You know, we're trying to make it more even. We're trying to predict over these number of years, if we give you a certain amount per year, I mean, it's your choice. You could also say goes, well, we actually want you to spend all of your reserve down to zero in one year. But then you'd see that moving forward, they're going more responsibly.
I would say, to that point, Catherine, that's something that we need to talk about too as a committee. So our goal is not to drain that. We do think we can responsibly spend from it, but I think it's in everyone's best interest for us not to drain it all. The way these, one of the planning board concerns that came up was what do we do in the event of an emergency? We've built it well here, the septic system has been repaired at one point, but there's a concern that was raised that in an emergency, that's where we could dip into some of those funds that we have for a project and we don't, let's say, have the opportunity to go through the whole system. So it's, it's good for annual projects not to zero down. But that's our, our target goal is to keep enough in there to handle some emergency expenses that might come up. One of the things too that I think is important to know is that our goal in this capital plan is to maintain this building as a functional and quality learning environment for a long time in general. The cost of a new building is tremendous. If you were to, if you think some of these projects that we have are expensive, you, you really need to see how much a new school construction would be.
They have.
Yeah, we did a few years.
We did. I'm just seeing the prices now.
I mean, when it's, when we're doing elementary schools now, they're averaging twelve million, fifteen million. And these are not big or glamorous, it's just the way that those projects are required to be bid out by the state and the way that those buildings are built nowadays. So our goal is to get that same quality of product here in this building for as long as we possibly can. And we think that this is that investment that the town needs to make to keep maintaining and building and make tactical upgrades to do that. We don't think it's a tremendous amount. Would you think that the other side of that would be a really, really tough pull to swallow first of all, not like Foster?
Can I add something? This is only gonna compound the problem that the town has with their capital project because we've tried and tried... because we've tried and tried on a ballot to get it up to four percent. So, this only compounds and makes it worse because now you guys are mandated to get three into yours, which really hurts our ability to take ours from two to four, which should've been done years ago, so...
We need to change it. That's gotta be changed.
Well, what the problem is at this time, this actually makes it worse. So, this is just an idea I'm throwing out there, kinda brought up to the conference the other night. Maybe if you do have a charter amendment committee, instead of asking for the two percent right up front to change it from two to four, break that out over, like I was explaining, half a percent over the next four years and have it approved that way. So, you can slowly build that half a percent in over four years, which is an easier sell because we really can't do the two now on top of the three going to the schools. So, I think if you do it a half a percent, you might be able to sell it that way. And, and this is gonna take a group effort from everybody to get the voice out that a capital improvement fund actually helps every single taxpayer where, where a school budget happens to help people with kids. But a capital improvement is a direct, just like the school thing, the analogy with that is every taxpayer benefits from better roads, better truck smaller roads and better buildings that, that they have, so...
And how expensive they become if you don't maintain them. Because then you're, then the cost, I mean, all of the costs, repairs are so much less expensive than the...
And that's why we wanted to do, like, we wanted to make the increase gradual too, only two and a half percent.
And that's why I'm thinking that the town shouldn't give up trying to get to the four percent. They should just adjust how they're gonna get to that four percent.
And that might be a good way to do it, is to...
Half a percent, I don't think it'll be a, I said, a small...
Have a charter amendment.
I think people need to know exactly what it is too, because that was a lot of the problem. They thought it was a slush fund for the council. They, people weren't really educated about what that fund is for. They had no idea.
I think if you explained it to them that night, like before, I know we're off the topic and I'm sorry. I think if you said the importance of it, it would be huge.
Right.
The one thing we've tried to emphasize on our committee is that these are capital projects, but they're really maintenance projects to somebody's head, not fixes. We're trying to avoid fixes where somebody has failed and then we're not in a position of strength and plan and enact on a project to, to, to bring it up to speed again. So, we're trying to see things that are slowly becoming obsolete and maintain them or upgrade them before they are no longer useful, so that, you know, we can plan for it. We can, despite what you heard before, we do plan for these things. We try, we try and respond with it. If we go out and get a complete set of drawings before we know a project is going to be real, and we've just spent twenty thousand dollars on drawings, and we've been, they're not be able to use... What is your criteria for a capital project?
Ten thousand or more, right? Fifteen-year life?
In the legislature, uh, I know what the town's is, but does the school committee have a specific criteria to meet?
I think it's town-wide because it's reported department.
Is it, so five-year life expectancy, expenditure of ten thousand or more?
But it can't be parking lots anymore, right, Mike? It can't be...
Well, there's different standards. There's the state's department events.
So, the state, so basically, capital projects are using things for twenty-five plus years, but the state as part of that three percent also includes maintenance. So, for example, five-hundred-and-something thousand dollars on a furnace, but if, um, a valve goes on and you have to spend five grand to fix that valve, that comes towards three percent.
It's over five thousand.
Yeah, so even though it's like a three, but even if it was a thousand dollars. So, if you spend money to maintain something you have...
Okay, so it gives a little bit of wiggle.
So, it gives a little wiggle room in that three percent. So, it's not that you're always buying stuff, it's, um, you're also fixing stuff.
Which helps schools that have kept up with their capital. Like, we have to adjust to what they're trying to implement. With other schools, they're gonna be dumping in the roofs and infrastructures.
Right. We're, we're trying to leverage that as much as we can to soften this blow. Ultimately, there are maintenance projects that are required. We can't look the other way on that. But we are trying to make sure that we're, that we're not just throwing money at something just to meet a mandate.
Well, I know that, and the planning board said too at their meeting, which I think they put forward too, about the well and the septic. I mean, I don't know who was on the council then, but we actually asked for a well. Because it was several years ago and there was, there was some sort of grant or loan. I can't remember what type of program it was. But the council didn't wanna do it at that time because it wasn't failing. So, it's a matter of philosophically, do we, at what point do we replace the well? Do we wait till it fails? Do the septic, do we wait? So, we're, you know...
Speaking in the construction industry, usually your wells really, never really fail.
Remember this discussion we had, it was several years ago?
Septic systems.
Well, there was a lot of, uh, different opinions on the well back then.
Right.
There, because I was involved with the planning board for a few years and through different superintendents and there was a lot of, um, things would come to us and then by the time we got to the council, all of a sudden, oh, we don't need that anymore. And I think the school committee and the superintendent's been doing a real good job of being consistent with his capital request and following through and getting the housing aid. It's improved immensely over the last few years because there was so much confusion because things didn't ever seem consistent. One year it'd be in there and the next year it'd be completely gone and then all of a sudden, oh, we want this this year. But what happened last year was we wanted the well and the septic and now you don't need that anymore.
We were scrambling throughout the process of collapse.
You know, through the buildings and grounds. You know, we were getting a lot of different answers and it wasn't, it wasn't very well done. And I think it's been done a lot better lately and I think it's improved. And I think this is a good format and the way you get, follow through and get your reimbursements is really important because I know the procedures are there that if you don't do everything properly, you won't get that money. We've been getting that money on schedule, so like, you know, we have improved our capital for the schools.
Yeah. We're really trying to leverage these next five years to take as much opportunity to get the extra bonuses as we can. So, we're bundling these projects and planning these projects. There's emphasis on getting that extra money. It's a direct benefit to that town too. Because if we say we don't fund this one year, that need doesn't go away. All it does is make the following years a little bit more, potentially, the risk of a failure more. So, I think the numbers there are pretty good, predictable from a budgeting standpoint. That was our goal, was just to give you some understanding of what we're planning to come forward. So, you can plan it for it or let us know if you want us to do it in the moment, go back to the drawing board.
This is a proposal.
The need is there. It is, it is real.
And I don't mean to be rude, but I'm holding my phone because Kelly has texted me a question.
Okay.
I wanted to...
Really, that's just on the text line?
I didn't want to. I'm not being rude, looking at my phone. She wanted to know if you added the capital to your operating budget to meet the state requirements.
So, that's the, one of the topics that's on consideration for the school committee. And for the first percent and a half, what we were looking to do is there are some things we can apply that we've already been spending. Like I said, fixing a burner, doing maintenance. So, for the first year, we were, we were kinda adding up the things we were already doing and we were planning to, to get to the percent that we're supposed to be at. We were planning to add twenty-two thousand while operating. So, if you look in that first column, so for FY twenty-twenty, which is the next year, we've gotta be at one and a half percent. So, we believe with, um, you know, adding to, so we're starting to add that to our budget, knowing that we already have some expenses, but we're planning to add...
We're gonna add half a percent to next year's budget.
And then a half a percent, then a half a percent, then a half a percent, and then those, Roger was...
So, that is in our current budget for next year.
But Kelly, be able to understand that from that chart?
I would send her to send that.
Oh, okay, that's...
That's what we just decided.
Why do you do?
Trying to translate.
Kelly, she's pretty...
Yeah, she understands this.
I, I think we're gonna get a little more nuanced from a budgeting standpoint too. Maybe next year we'll have a better understanding of other things we can apply to. This is largely a learning curve for all of the schools in the state, um, what, what we can apply, what we can't.
And it was, they were very specific on certain things we can't apply.
Ah, and some stuff that you can't, that don't...
And that three percent is also minimal. I mean, that's the minimum amount they're saying. They're not saying that three percent a year covers...
You're good to go.
Exactly. That's like to maintain buildings. No, no, but that's to maintain buildings. They're trying to make sure buildings don't fall apart by school committees to neglect or towns neglect. You know, student safety is, yes, important.
When you said that, the schools have done a little better job. Um, I would say that when we, when we started, there were some things that had been neglected here. You know, the furnace wasn't done, but there were just some things that I shook my head at when I walked in the door. We actually had carpeting on the walls. So, like literally, the walls were mounted with carpeting. And so, it picked up that musty smell, it carried that musty smell. So, there are things we did like, maybe we should have plaster on the wall?
Yeah.
Maybe we should have insulation between the plaster and the wall? And so, when we did do the heating system, we did blow some insulation into the walls. What you may not know is that, um, in, in the front of the building, there was, for those of you who've been here a while, you would know that, there was more glass. But at some point, they, um, they actually put up some veneer and some brick walls and they just encased the glass. The windows were still left in between. So, all they did was put up studded walls on top of the windows and put no insulation. So, when we did the heating system, so that's something like, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, whatever it was. So, when we did the, um, heating system, we pulled the, uh, the radiators out. Um, you know, we did the piping, but we also did some blown insulation into the walls at that time as well, so... So, there's some things here that had been historically, um, there was, uh, I don't know, it is what it is. We did repave the back of the school and, um, one of the reasons we found out that there was a lot of cracks in the asphalt is a portion of the back parking lot had been paved on top of beach sand. So, there was beach sand down and whoever the contractor was, they didn't remove it. They just put the asphalt on top of it, which that's a shift. So, we fixed that, by the way.
When you did the, um, redid the heating system, I was, I thought the, um, pipes were in the concrete or something? Did that was taken out?
So, there's, um, so there were, there were actually wooden bookshelves and the, the heating registers, so what you would consider baseboard heat that shows up in your house. So, there's the fin tube. That fin tube was behind those bookshelves. So, that all got stripped out, um, the, the wooden bookshelves got stripped out. They, um, addressed all the area behind that and they ran new copper tubing and new fin.
So, it wasn't the concrete?
So, there is something in the concrete, but there was lots of things. In every classroom, there was, um, like three-quarter inch pipe running in, like, you know, two inches in front of the wall. But then there were, so those are what fed the, um, the ventilators. So, we have these units that sit underneath the windows, so...
It was the old part of the building that was in the concrete, the original part, not this.
Yeah.
That end was all on the floor. This end was up in the ceilings and through the walls, wasn't it?
This one's all new as well. This one's a little different.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the best visual example of, so...
She survived.
But there were some things that were just done years ago and they might've been okay years ago, but, you know, they've got adjusted.
And I think the dynamics of the school environment have changed too. Some of the projects aren't just maintenance. I mean, with much different safety requirements that we had even five or six years ago.
Windows, yeah.
So, some of the upgrades that we're, we're doing are, are best practices for safety as well. We're trying to be very reasonable and applying them, you know, as best we can. But that, that's a changing world that we live in. You see that in some of these as well.
And though, have you seen the school, you know, we used to have these big glass doors in the front that, you know, were, you know, water ceiling panes and now we have the kind of blue metal doors and they have a different kind of hardware on them, so they're more secure. So, we did replace exterior doors. We still have one set to do, but, um, but again, those are, to Brendan's point, some health and safety things that are necessary in today's environment, unfortunately.
So, is there anything else on capital?
There's, there is something for the council on capital, um...
Is that our last agenda?
Yeah, that is our fourth agenda item. It's, it's still related to capital, but this one has a...
It's gonna absorb it all.
Can I add some extra of this as well?
Is it C? Yes, it's C. I know, you know? One way. I need treats after that.
So, as I said, we are, um, we are currently in the process of submitting additional projects to the state because there's this quarter, two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars that came out. And our thinking was, there's a lot of very needy school facilities and if we wait two years till everybody else gets all their plans in, the money won't, there won't be money left over. So, although we currently have a five-year plan, we asked the state if we could do another one and have them overlap. And that's what they've done. So, the reason I explained the other sheet is, um, we have a, about a million dollars worth of projects on this right now. Actually, exactly right now, a million. But we also had three-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the old projects. That's why that last sheet we were just talking about had one-point-three-five million because we know we gotta be able to fund those plus this. So, this is what we're proposing to submit to the state. And, um, on this is some capital projects that we'd like to see done at the school. And, uh, I'll kinda go back to the important piece in one second. So, but just to list some of those projects, it's replacing some of the vinyl floor tiling in the car, cafeteria and the corridors. Some of those are lifting and cracking as we go. They've gotten water under them over the years. We don't seal them properly, but I can't fix what was not done properly in the past. But, uh, replacing the boiler flues on that list, again, to get state aid. Replacing another set of doors and doing some siding on the eaves. There's actually some siding, so those are projects we put forward. Replacing some roofing. We do have some, this, obviously, this roof was all replaced, but there's still some flat roofs that do leak on some of the big ice storms. That's one of those projects that if we are running out of money, we can push that instead of years four and five, we could push that into years five and then the next plan. Or we could just do like twenty or thirty grand on that and push that into the next plan. And I'll explain that in one second. We're putting it on the plan now in case we can get those extra funds from the state. But replacing ceilings and corridors, some HVAC and plumbing, some little electrical repairs and then some outdoor physical education space. Again, updating like the playgrounds, um, the kindergarten and the first grade playground. The reason we put, um, a little more than what we're required to do is, if you go across the bottom, there's a line that's called total estimated dollars and that shows one million dollars worth of expense. And if you look at the dollar amounts, they're certainly more than the hundred and thirty-five thousand we've been talking about. But the way the state regulations read is, you only have to do fifty percent of what you submit to them. So, even though you might've planned to do a million dollars, if you find out, you know, geez, with local budgets and what's going on, we can only afford to do six-hundred thousand, that's okay. You have to do a minimum of fifty percent. So, quite frankly, we're asking for a little more because if you only ask for five-hundred thousand and you spend six-hundred thousand, that last hundred thousand is one-hundred percent local money. But if you ask for a million and you spend six-hundred thousand, all six-hundred thousand is shared by the state at thirty-five percent, plus the bonuses they give. So, the bottom line is, if you ask for too little, you pay one-hundred percent locally for every dollar above that. If you ask for too much, and you always, you have to spend at least fifty percent of it. But to maximize the funds back to the community, we're asking for more than we think we can actually fund over that five-year period. And so, the bottom line shows the minimum of what we're required to do, which is eighty-two thousand, eighty-two thousand, ninety-seven thousand, a hundred and seventeen, and a hundred and twenty. And all of those are, that minimum is under the one-thirty-five, that the three percent we kept talking about. We have to have three percent in our budget now. That comes out to be about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, the minimum we have to do is below that number. And if we have the ability to go above, then we would get, again, the state would share that because we're not underselling what we're asking for. So, we're being strategic, but...
And this is, do you have that extra housing, that, the, the extra housing allotment that was set aside? And that was our, your, um, goal behind this, right, Mike?
Correct. So, what the council should know is that, um, as part of the requirements for the Rhode Island Department of Education, we do require, um, school committee approval and they did vote on it on Tuesday night, um, two days ago. And they had a meeting, just before the regional meeting. And then, um, you all voted on it. There's a council back in September. You did what we call phase one. The architects have updated some of the prices. That's why these numbers are different than September. And so, what we'll be asking for you is, um, to authorize us to do a phase-two submission with the dollar amount not to exceed what's on this paper. So, basically, we won't be going over budget, but knowing that we're committing to a minimum of five-hundred thousand dollars if you vote in the affirmative.
And that's if the town accepts, if the state accepts it to that?
Correct. That's one other thing. This, just because we've asked for a million does not mean the state will say yes to a million because lots of other schools are asking for money too. So, they might say yes to nine-hundred or eight-hundred or seven-hundred, so, um...
And it's like committing you to the fifty percent of what they approve.
Correct. So, if they only approve eight-hundred thousand, then we're committed to forty, uh, four-hundred thousand. And the reason we did the sheet this way is, if we go up to two percent in our budget and we receive a one percent from the town, you know, half of what you collect comes back, then, um, we'll likely be able to fund everything on this plan and still have, we'd actually be able to fund, um, the entire plan, um, if we use some of our fund balance as well. So, bottom line is, I wanted to make sure we had the dollars to do everything if necessary, but we're only required to do the, the bottom number at a minimum in order to still be eligible to keep receiving state funds.
So is this something that the council can't take action on this at all until you've submitted to the state, they approve it and it comes back?
Vice versa.
We have to prove it to go on. I, then I, I heard you wrong, I thought you said that we couldn't, okay.
No, we have to approve it and then they have to go to the state.
All right.
They can't go to the state until we say, yeah, go ahead.
And then this is gonna have to be approved at a financial town meeting.
Right, expenses ultimately would get approved at a financial.
Right, there's layers to it.
Yeah.
Right, so it would go from us to the state, to the financial town meeting.
It's worth noting too that we do have some concerns about the cost of some of the work that we're gonna be doing on school projects, particularly the school and any really school for the next five years because of the bond money that was recently made available for those projects. So demand for that type of construction work is gonna drive some of the costs up. So I just, when you look at these values, we try to incorporate that into there, but it's, it's gonna swing like wildly.
It's unpredictable to the bidding war, right?
Correct, correct.
They're already busy, they don't need more work, they're gonna say, hey, I'll do it if you give me.
I miss you.
It's a bidding war in their favor.
Yeah, in their favor.
Right, right. It's like selling your houses.
And if I get the job, then great money in my pocket.
Yeah, right.
So yeah, I'm sorry, I was just, what I meant is that we're not committed to the whole number. So say the million dollars is whatever the state approves, the state accepts our, approves our, our projects.
And when Dr. Lawrence says a million dollars too, that's the total project cost, not necessarily what the town is spending. That includes the state contribution. So the town cost for that five-year plan is six hundred and fifty or whatever.
Yeah, less like the, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the town, so. It's just where, what we hear is, it's a huge number, it's as, as the smaller, but the actual town piece.
So the town piece at a, a maximum of a million would be six hundred and fifty thousand. If we're able to get some of those extra bonuses of the five percent for energy efficiency, like if you put in LED lighting or for insulation, et cetera. If you're, you have energy efficiency and health and safety, you can get an extra five, an extra five. So the town cost may be six hundred or maybe five fifty. But again, I want to be clear that I think we've put more on the paper than we can do and, and should do because we can always move things to the next five years because we're gonna have to keep spending a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars forever, according to the current law, unless Mr. Chippendale is successful in making a change in.
Just out of curiosity, are we still paying the people that put the roof on to shovel the roof off to?
We have that in maintenance, right?
We have a line up there, but I don't believe we've used it the last few years.
I think it's like ten thousand dollars we have set aside.
Because we have to use them to keep the guarantee on the roof or something, right?
To keep the warranty, you, you're supposed to use the roofing contractor. And if we get six inches of snow, we don't bother, but we have, we did bring the concrete. I remember we had the storm after storm after storm.
Two years ago, yeah.
We, in, in that case, we did bring.
So we still have to use it.
Correct.
So would you need a motion to, to, just a motion to submit this to the state for approval?
Yeah, I was saying.
Look at the, on the agenda, what G says, that we approve the school construction forces, school stage two submission.
To, right, if you make a motion to approve, you know, just those words, it'd be sufficient.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the school construction, foster school department's stage two submission to the Rhode Island Department of Education as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for doing that tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I'd really like to thank you guys for coming tonight, seeing as you know how busy you are and thank you.
Do a lot of these time here.
We think it's really important to have a conversation.
Very, great.
But it's all busy.
It is a team effort, like we care about the town and we're very concerned about the taxes and.
It's just so much better when you communicate, you're, and you're on the same page, I like.
So thank you, yeah.
We have published comment on the agenda, if anyone has more.
Can we just do one more thing before we move on? I apologize, I don't know if your council rules require a formal vote or if the president is disauthorized. We have to submit evidence of this to the Department of Education and your minutes won't be posted until after. So basically just authorizing the president to write a letter saying you took this vote tonight. Just confirming that a vote was taken in support. So I don't know if you need a formal motion to do that.
Okay, who is that, you're right?
Well, yeah, so basically the, the, and I can ghostwrite it if you need to. The council president would have to just write a letter saying that on March, I'm sorry, February.
Seven.
On February seventh, the vote of the town council was taken to, at three, you know, a three-zero vote of the council was taken to authorize the state's two submission, that's like two sentences.
So move.
That's what I was just gonna say. Okay, so I'll second.
Thank you.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Did you get that, so?
Kinda.
It's just giving.
Trade on.
We have to write a letter to the county saying that we took your vote.
February seventh, vote of the council was taken to, what was the wording?
Submit.
Send, submit it.
Submit.
To submit.
Right.
And then you just have to say.
Stage two, to submit stage two.
On the agenda. Okay?
Yeah.
And when would you like that, tomorrow?
When we, we do the fifteenth, so when you come through in the next couple of days or so. Do you have other obligations?
No, one day nap.
Day nap?
Yeah.
And I think that's everything, right?
Yes.
So we're like, yeah, both a motion to adjourn for the school committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Any motion to adjourn to the council?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys, don't want to.
Thank you so much.
It's the twenty-eighth.
Is that very fast?
I have a dentist right by me.
Uh, who is it?
Of you.
She's a girl with a blind.
Oh, she's a girl. Well, I looked at her and go, I don't know.